Let us pray. Father, we just thank you today for allowing us to be here in your grace and your mercy and all the things that you're doing for us. Lord, let us pray. The heads of protection over our county, of our state, of our country, and of our world, where we just thank you and we honor you for all that you're doing and the wisdom that you're giving during this meeting and the things that you're saying unto us, Lord. Let us take these things, Lord, and be able to make wise decisions today in everything that we do. We just plead Psalms 91 over our county, over our citizens, and all that are involved in this. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We will officially call the special session of the Swain County Board of Commissioners on March 27, 9:00. We will call on Gunner, if he will, to step forward and lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This being, we'll be talking about this later on, but first of all, let me just say publicly that we're using a certain number. It's the Health Department's hotline number for anyone who wants to call in, ask questions or seek information. So you can give a call to 488-3198. If they cannot answer the question you have or the information you seek, that call will then be referred to the people that need to receive it and get you the information. But we want you to know that we're concerned about your questions and now you have a hotline number on which to call. Thank you. On these meetings, we do not have an agenda, rightfully so, I think, because we need to discuss a lot of stuff. I want to tell the public something that has happened. I mean, nothing serious, but I want people to understand that when the governor issued the state of emergency for the state, it kicked in to effect some new laws. One of those laws is that it set in motion our emergency team. And our emergency team, which only advises us as commissioners, but they're on top of this simply because they live it 24/7. And that's our health department, our EMS department, our manager, and our sheriff's department. So that would be considered your emergency team at this particular point. So if you have questions, call that hotline number, but we will ensure that all of our management, uh, emergency team are in place and we trust their judgment and they advise us. So if there's any questions about that, you can give me a call. My phone number is 736-1876. Don't be bashful about calling. We'll answer any questions you have and hope, we hope that we can provide you with the information you need. What we will do at this particular point is hear from David and Allison and see if we have anything new going on. So David, would you mind?
Hello, Allison. The situation will require support.
Okay, that's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yesterday, approximately 2:15, 2:30, the State Health Director, Dr. Elizabeth Tilson, and the Director of NC Emergency Management, Mike Sprayberry, did a briefing. You may have all listened to it or read afterwards. Yesterday afternoon, there were 636 cases in 57 counties. The average age is 41. We have 50 hospitalizations and two deaths. Only one of those deaths are actually reported in North Carolina. The other one is reported in Virginia, the state that they primarily live in. And the other death had underlying medical conditions as well. There have been approximately 15,300 labs completed and there are over 15,000 labs still pending. With that, our labs, they said anywhere from three to five days. It is taking at least a week to get those lab results back for those that are being tested in Swain County. The, um, Mike Sprayberry, the NC Emergency Management Manager or Director, excuse me, said that 48 counties have EOCs activated, 95 counties and EBCI have declared local states of emergency, and there have been 2,500 resource requests across the state. He also did say that the White House granted Governor Roy Cooper's request late Wednesday for a federal disaster declaration for the COVID-19 pandemic in North Carolina. This declaration provides public assistance to all 100 North Carolina counties, allowing local governments, state agencies, and eligible nonprofits to be reimbursed for costs involved in responding to the outbreak of COVID-19. As an update today, we did email, visit, call motels, hotels, B&Bs, campgrounds on Monday. We also sent that information to EBCI as well. We are waiting on approximately, probably anywhere from five to 10 labs to come back currently for Swain County. We were notified this morning. We do have a positive in our county. It is a part-time resident. They have been isolated since symptoms appeared and then they were tested and went back home. And they have not left their home since then.
When you say they went back home, they went back home to their state?
No, sir. They went back to where they were here in Swain County.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
Had that person traveled out of the, I mean, let's assume they were infected out of the county. Do you know that information?
I do not know that information. They did travel here from another state and then upon arriving here in the county, started to show symptoms and then they were tested.
You know how long they had been here from the other state?
Um, when they first started showing symptoms, about a week.
About a week.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Allison, when you called the lodging establishments around in our county, what was their reaction to your call? I guess I'm trying to get a sense of community of cooperation or?
There was cooperation. My environmental health staff did the majority of it and they didn't have any pushback.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually talked to a lot, pretty much most of them. They all called me, it seemed like, the next day. And they were very cooperative about trying to get people out of their cabins when I talked to, like, probably four different cabin rental places.
I just have one more question and it's about testing.
Yes.
Who, what, when, and where. I think the CDC and some of the national people are saying, if you don't feel like it, don't get tested, just stay home, hunker down. But my question is, are there essential people who really ought to be seeking a test? And I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about the sheriff, actually, and some of the other people who will be working within, for the safety of the county.
I think in that, um, in that aspect, the, they are asking that healthcare workers be tested.
Right.
Past that, do you remember?
CDC issued some guidance and they have a priority list. We haven't shared that on our Facebook page, but I know that Graham County did share it on theirs. And it is healthcare workers and those who are taking care of sick individuals that may have become sick themselves and those that have been exposed, because there's really not anything that you do differently once you have that test, other than if it is a healthcare worker, then obviously they wouldn't be working.
And I would assume, and I'm making an assumption here and that's always dangerous, but I would assume that also people working with, within senior citizen communities, such as Mountain View, that kind of stuff. But you're still talking about healthcare workers.
Yes.
So, okay. But I was just wondering, and again, it's to kind of calm the waters and not issue panic, but simply saying, you know, those who need to be worked with are being worked with as far as the Health Department is concerned.
Yes, they are. And like Allison said, the test results are taking a week to come back. And so by the time you get it, you should have been isolated anyway. So regardless of whether you're tested or not, the recommendation is that if you feel ill, you isolate yourself and there's no need to be tested or see the doctor unless you get sick sick.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
The only thing I have to announce is, of course, you can call 211 to get information for food assistance, paying your rent, utilities, and basic information. Or you can text COVIDNC at 82, or excuse me, at 898211 to get regular updates by text.
Is that COVID-19 or is that just COVID-19?
Excuse me, it's COVIDNC.
Okay.
I may have said 19, but it's COVIDNC.
Okay, COVIDNC.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
So since the order was in place on Monday, we've received numerous calls. We've tried to respond to each of those calls in a common sense method, in a manner to meet the criteria of the order. Sheriff's Department yesterday started doing spot checks of cabins and I'd like the sheriff to do that later on, please.
Just a little update on what we have done since the declaration came out. We've checked a lot of cabins by far. There's a lot of cooperation by folks, but there's always that little number that's going to try to skirt around that declaration and they're using the 30-day rental to try to do it.
Right.
As of yesterday, we, I didn't know this, we had our emergency meeting yesterday, so we were going to come back to you all today and tell you we didn't have any more recommendations, but I do have one, is to amend the declaration to say that no rentals beyond the date of the declaration. And that, that will eliminate that, skirting around that, that 30-day clause in, in the declaration. Like I said, our officers have been out Wednesday and yesterday. We're going out again today. We're going, going to be checking. We've told them we're going to be back to spot check and so far, so good. What, what brought on my recommendation to you though today, I personally talked to one of those rental agencies. They, they've got their doors closed and, but they had a service number, a customer service number on the door to call. So I called and told the lady that, you know, we were just checking to make sure that there was, there's renters were gone. And she said, well, they are, but we're going to, we're going to start the 30-day rental. So that, that's going against the spirit of the declaration.
Right.
Just on another note, we've checked Ingalls, IGA, Bojangles, Burger King, and McDonald's early in the morning, 7:00, 7:30, 8:00. And at those times, there are no out-of-state cars in any of those businesses. They're all North Carolina tags. Now, that doesn't mean they're all Swain County residents. They could be here from somewhere else. But the declaration is working. It is going to take a little time to get to full effect, but again, I want to recommend that you all go back and amend that 30-day clause so we can, can nip it in the bud as Barney Fowce says.
Right. Is that it? Gentlemen, let's go ahead, oh, Commissioners, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I also echo what the sheriff said. I do feel that the, the order that was in place Monday is working for Swain County. I feel like we've lessened the travel, which is what our goal was in the beginning. So I think that is working. Big picture, working with state emergency management to, to look at a regional and statewide effort. There's a, a big plan being built for hospital surge. One estimate, and we hope this is a high estimate, is that there'll be a 50% hospital surge, which means if a hospital has 100 beds, they'll need another 50. Again, we hope that's a high estimate. But we're working with the state and our regional partners, looking at sites to set up surge hospitals should this be necessary. The state has a volunteer hotline open, and I'm sorry I don't have that number with me, but I'll furnish that. A volunteer hotline open for healthcare workers to call and volunteer to staff and man these things. As of 5:00 yesterday, they had 500 healthcare workers vetted that they were licensed in North Carolina and capable and qualified to work in these things.
Wow.
So, you know, a lot of plans going on for this thing to get, you know, worse than it is now. So as we look forward, we probably want to keep that in mind.
Well, I thank you for that, David. And also, I know that there are people out there who want to volunteer. I just have another name that I will send to you after this meeting, who is offering his services to volunteer. And we've had others. And I don't know if you have, you can assure them that they will be placed on a list or, you know, if needed, call them.
Yes. The other thing we're doing locally is we're looking, working and hopefully we'll have it operational by Monday. We're looking to set up a food donation site. Uh, we're looking to have it at Family Resource Center, someone who has extra food or is willing to purchase extra food to drop off, and we'll distribute it as needed throughout the county to people who are just out of work or, you know, may have a need for food. Hopefully, we'll have that operational by Monday.
Okay, good. Regarding the food pantry in, in Burgtown, it appears that some are trying to work with us and let some of the people whom I call in Lower Swain County because they're not on the reservation to get to the food pantry. But I think that that avenue is going to be shut down. So I'm going to get with you and, and let you just make some inquiries and see where we are with that so we can advise our citizens who may be trying to get up in that area and work with the food pantry itself. They're a church, so work with the food pantry themselves and maybe getting some stuff into Swain County, where, how, when, what needs to be all worked out. So I'm just advising you of that, that that may come down the pike as well.
And to tag along to what Amber was saying about healthcare workers, EMS staff have been advised if they have, well, to do daily, particularly if they've been exposed, self-checks on temp cure and any other symptoms. I'm also told, if working with Mountain View Manor, that as their staff comes to work, most of those are tested for temp cure and screened with questions as they come to work each day so that we can keep those folks safe. An exposure at EMS would be an exposure where the paramedic didn't have on protective equipment, come upon someone unexpectedly and they sneaked in his face or something like that. If they're wearing the protective equipment, mask, face shield, gloves, gown, then that's not exposure. They're considered protected. But each day, they're asked to self-monitor, temp cure, any other conditions they might have. And I understand that's going on in other places around the county as well.
Do you personally, do you, does your department personally have enough equipment and masks and gowns and stuff?
We have about a two-week supply.
Okay.
I spoke with state officials yesterday. Part of this disaster declaration by the governor of the state allows us to go directly to state to order needed supplies and the state can go to the federal governor. There is a supply being held for EMS use and for a hospital use and that kind of thing, should we get to the point where they have to start distributing. There's supposed to be a million masks to do in North Carolina sometime this week or first next week. So we should be able to alleviate some of those problems at that point. The other thing the declaration gives the county is the option, or the absolutely option, of any overtime, any extra costs incurred, any purchasing that's directly related to this, to the question, they reimburse us for that. That's what the public assistance part, that Allison was talking about, I mean, that's assistance to local government agencies. So early on, we asked the finance department to start tracking purchases and, and also start tracking overtime costs. So at the end of this thing, we'll file a report with the federal government, hopefully to recoup some of that money for the county.
Well, and I think that one of the reasons, as you all know, David, that, that this board agreed to the state of emergency declaration was simply because the third section of it, the third part of it was that we could get reimbursed for some of our expenses. Without that signed declaration, we could not, we would not be entitled to that kind of thing.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And when President Trump approved the governor's request yesterday for a federal disaster declaration, that put all that in place.
Good.
And we were really thankful, Joe.
And, and we hope that gave you the tools necessary to do just that, so.
Coach us up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, David, from your team? Or you and Allison?
Kevin's report, you haven't heard of yet.
Okay.
So as you heard from the sheriff, one of the items that the team is requesting would be to amend the supplemental, first supplemental, uh, local declaration of emergency to become effective the date, so as of that date, establish that there are only, if you were in a 30-day rental program, as of that date, then you would qualify. But if, but if not, if you just, if it's after that, then it would not. And so that would be, I would need that in like a form of a motion and then we'll amend that document and have you re-sign it.
Okay. Okay, let's back up for just a second on the sheriff's recommendation that this amendment happen. I just want people to understand how this works with us. We've got a team in place and that team was put in place by the emergency declaration by the governor. And so we take your recommendations seriously. We still have to pass it as Board of Commissioners and not usurping our authority. They are simply providing us with their basic knowledge of the county and what will better serve the county. And so I think we need to listen to it, hear it, and move with it. So with the manager also making it, thank you, Sheriff. With the manager also making that recommendation, you have a, an amended document in front of you, but that needs to be amended as I'm understanding this.
Correct. So what you have in front of you is different. The first one is just an amendment and we can do that by a motion and then we'll get an updated copy to you. This is kind of something that happened this morning, so we didn't have time to amend the actual first one, so, but we'll get a updated copy to you, but we can do it by a motion, just stating that that became on the 17th, the 17th day of March. I'm sorry, it was Monday. This past Monday, sorry. So we'll amend that one to establish that that was the day that they had to be engaged in the 30-day rental program, as of that day.
As of that day, they had to be in a rental program.
Program for a 30-day period.
Otherwise, as the sheriff pointed out very succinctly, they're trying to get around this.
Correct.
By adding now onto that rental to make it a 30-day.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on that? Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion if you would like to add this adendum to the declaration.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a amendment to the declaration that as, I guess the date would be Monday, the 3/23. As of that date, we're using that date.
Right.
As the point of 30-day rentals. If you were not a 30-day rental on that date, you're not a 30-day rental.
In other words, they cannot go in even if they post-dated or predated the agreement? And it's a good question that just popped into my mind, Sheriff. How do we, how do we account for that? If they, if the landowner were to, if I were to sit down with someone today and wrote the 23rd in on the rental agreement, is there any way to?
It would take a lot of vigilance on our part to make sure that those people that we have saw them here.
Sure.
And that we could, I mean, we're going to question those people and, and find out exactly what day they did sign that agreement. And then, you know, chips fall where they fall at that point.
Right, okay. Very good. Thank you. That was just clarification. We have a motion on the floor to accept amendment as recommended by the sheriff and also the county manager, that the actual start date of any rental will be March the 23rd, 2020. I need a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept this amendment to the, to the policy statement. Any questions regarding that from anyone? All those in favor of this, raise your right hand. Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, anything else?
We've got a couple folks, I think, for public comment here, I think.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anything else right now?
We have one other document that we want to, to share with you. This is an additional supplemental declaration of a local state of emergency. It's in addition to the one on the 23rd. It's just for your consideration. At yesterday's meeting, we really didn't discuss this particular document, but in light of, of some other information that we received last evening, we had Kim Carpenter, our county attorney, craft this. And it basically just defines what essential services are. So a lot of definitions, even though it's a, it's a large document, it kind of really goes in depth about what essential services are, what can and can't be done during a stay-home, stay-safe declaration like this. I can read the top, top piece for the benefit of the public. This is a supplemental declaration of local state of emergency, restricting movement of all individuals living within Swain County, the town of Rosso City, to stay at their place of residence, except that they may leave to provide or receive certain essential services or engage in certain essential activities and work for essential businesses and governmental services. Restricting all businesses and governmental agencies to cease nonessential operations, requiring public mobility within the locations within the county, restricting all nonessential gatherings of individuals, and all nonessential travel. And then under section number five, it, it kind of goes into leaving the home for essential activities is permitted. It's for health and safety, for necessary supplies and services, for outdoor activity, for certain types of work, to take care of others, for the elderly and those who are vulnerable, healthcare and public health operations, the human services operations, essential infrastructure, essential governmental functions, essential business and operations, which includes stores that sell groceries and medicine, food, beverage, and agriculture, organizations that provide charitable and social services, the media, gas stations and businesses needing, needed for transportation, financial institutions, hardware and supply stores, critical trades, mail, post, shipping, logistic, delivery, and pickup services, educational institutions, laundry services, restaurant for consumption off premises, supplies to work at work from home, supplies for essential business and operations, transportation, home-based care and services, residential facilities and shelters, professional services, childcare centers, manufacturer distribution, supply chain, and funeral services. So it kind of really goes in depth and each one of those categories are defined on exactly what those entail. This was, it, it's a combination of a lot of different best practices throughout the state. There is about 15 entities throughout the state currently that have a, a shelter in place or stay-home, stay-safe document. And so it's, it's really taken. And so, it's really taken from a lot of those different ones and putting it that's going to best fit Swain County. And so, that's what this document does. This is a supplemental to the one that you did on the 23rd, and it's basically just widely more defined it. So, we're bringing that to the board for your consideration at this point. And I invite any of the other, any of the other group to talk about it, the need for it, so.
You think it's self-explanatory, David? Is that what you?
The county attorney crafted this document last night, and I've read through it a little bit this morning.
Okay.
It looks very similar to what Haywood County put in place yesterday. There's very few changes from the Haywood County. It allows for people to, that are in most trades, most businesses, most organizations to continue to work. It allows full access for all citizens to go get groceries, medicines, supplies at a hardware store, construction items to build houses with. It allows all that, as in Haywood County's. There's not a lot of difference in this order than what we're actually doing now. It just puts a few more teeth into it. It's going to increase the sheriff's enforcement caseload, and he probably wants to address that, I'm sure. So, this order is probably a good thing, and I say that based on when this emergency's over, did we do all we can do for Swain County?
So, essentially, this is a stay-home, stay-safe order?
This is a stay-home, stay-safe order. With enough exceptions to where we can still fully function as the government, as families at home.
What exactly is a change that's in this than what we're doing now? Just more people's going to call the sheriff's department and tell them to go check out these people?
That's exactly.
From what I read, it pretty much lets anybody work, still go to work, and it just recommends that they stay home if they can, and we're already doing that, aren't we? Recommending everybody to stay home if they can. But as far as what I read, like you said, construction workers can work, businesses can work. What restrictions would it actually change that we're not? What businesses are we actually talking about that it would change?
It defines it more, one, that I know you've received a, I think I sent you a communication from the Realtors Association. They are not a part of this, so they are not an essential service at this point because they're bringing in people possibly from out of town that, you know.
To liquid properties and to?
Correct. And so, anyway, they are not a part of the professional services. So, that's one, one category that you will probably be hearing from. But they are bringing in, we've witnessed it, bringing in folks from out of town, even during this, during this crisis, that are looking at houses in our community that are from out of state. And so, with that being said, that's why we eliminated from the professional services that, that segment of business.
Realtors would be able to show houses virtually, talk to clients, show pictures, show videos, you know, they can still function, everything except the face-to-face, face-to-face operation.
But that should already be covered, too, because they should be able to work at home, and so is anybody who can work at home. So, it should be covered by recommending that they work at home and not bring anybody else here that they don't have to from another state.
Correct. This document basically just defines more about what is essential and what is not essential during this time of crisis.
Is there any more groups besides just Realtors that?
That's the one that kind of jumps out at me on, on the page, and that's what a lot of county governments in North Carolina have, have kind of dabbled around. I think that certain governments have left them in as a professional service. Some of them have taken them out for that particular reason, that most of the folks that are coming in are out of state, and you don't know where they're coming from and what they're bringing with them. So, that was why that the majority of the county left them out of the essential services.
But it does not make any sense to me if they're going to be bringing people in from out of county to even have the rest of the stuff.
Right.
Would this also include retail spaces, plug-in stores, retail?
Uh, let's see.
I would assume that they would close down there, not essential, is what I'm asking. Because I know I'm going to get questions about that.
What was the question again, Allison?
Retail spaces in town? Not restaurants, but retail.
No, I understand.
Probably get lots and lots of questions about what stores?
I believe most of them have already closed, but what does this order mean?
I think it would be underneath B. I mean, you could make, you could probably make a, a stretch underneath B that it would be for household members or delivery of those services or supplies to others such as, let's see, groceries, household consumer products, house later household consumer product.
So, they wouldn't have to close. This, that I read, doesn't really close anything, right?
Anything for the folks that are here.
Right.
And let me ask you a question, and this goes back to David and Sheriff. If we were going to set into place this kind of thing, it would appear to me that the buildings that were begun on March 23rd should be allowed to complete, but no new building. Why are we, why are we leaving that gap there?
I think this order allows construction to continue as is. New buildings could be constructed, buildings could be completed that are under construction.
Right, I understand that, David, but I'm saying, we set on the renters, we set Monday as the beginning of the, how do they get, how do we make sure that new visit, new buildings are not approved? Okay, right. New buildings are not approved as of the 23rd, and so, they can bring in, if they get building permits, they can bring in workers to do the, to do the job necessary. To me, this is a loophole that people can look at and find, and, you know, we're not doing anything about the stay-at-home, stay-safe order.
Yes, sir.
We're opening it up, in my mind, but I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The three or four of these that I have read, Haywood, Duncan, part of Mapleburgs, and this one, all allow for construction trade workers to continue to come to the county and work in an effort to keep the economy going. Like, stopping construction, that would take a large number of folks that live in Swain County and put them in an unemployment line. So, I think that's the reasoning that that's left in, that construction trades are allowed to continue, that new, new construction be allowed to, to start and continue. We can keep construction rentals once they're finished by the building permit process. We can hold all the, you know, those tickets of completion if need be until this emergency's over, so that no one can occupy a new house, you know, if there was a need for that.
If, if their workers were coming from counties around us to build these houses, coming from counties around us.
There is an exposure possibility, yes, sir.
Right, there is an exposure. Is there any way that we could suggest, if we have people out of work in Swain County, we don't need to bring importing other people if they can do the job that needs to be done, and we have the people in Swain County? So, my question is, is there any way to suggest that they hire in-county rather than importing workers in to Swain County in order to complete these projects?
Mr. Seaman, besides you, probably could answer this better than I can, but I would guess the majority of the home construction in Swain County is done by workers within a two or three-county radius?
Yeah.
Would that be correct?
Yeah, the majority of the homes that are being built right now are built by local contractors who hire local people. There may be some subs that come out, Jackson County and Macon County, but it's not like an overwhelming load of people that are coming in here for these houses.
But there are people coming in, if I hear what you're saying, you're not ruling out 100% would be here.
Well, there's no way to rule out 100% of anything coming into this county.
Then why are we doing this? In any part of it?
Because we're trying to protect the 99%.
Trying to keep people working.
That's not true, but.
We're trying to keep people working that can work. And there's other counties, there's people in this county that works in other counties.
I understand.
And we're still allowed to, I'm pretty sure, as of now.
We got people living out of this county going to other counties to work. So, it would be the essential same if you shut down people coming in, the same ones going out, it's going to come, get something and bring it back in. So, I mean, there's like, there's just like not a 100% foolproof plan to make it work 100%, but you can't not do it because you can't get the 100%. You've still got to be able to do as much as we can with what we can.
Other counties, I know Haywood County's one of theirs that we did not put in here, is if a county resident from Haywood went somewhere for three days, when they came back, they would have self-quarantine. We didn't add any of that in as well, and I think that goes along with it. So, if somebody comes in to work, they're going to be leaving that same day, and it'll be easily within a three-county area. So, I think that was a minimal risk versus somebody that was having, that was going back to like an out-of-state person.
I did not read the three-county limit.
No, there's no three-county limit, but, but normally, if somebody's farther than that, they're going to be spending the night here, and it would be the stay-in-place order. We've had several people come in, there's a group up on, that's building houses on Alarca, that have out-of-state folks building those. They stay, they're staying in Swain County now, they have been for over several months, and they asked for variances to stay at the, at a local hotel, which we granted because that was a reasonable with the first order. The, the hotel that's going in down the street, they, all their workers are from out of state. They're staying at a local hotel. So, a lot of different things like that. So, I think the people that are from way far off, that are in Swain County building are already here, have already received, you know, variances to stay here, this order would say, okay, well, you can't leave. You know, if you're here, you can't leave. If you do, you know.
Okay, so, so, I guess what I'm getting at with all of this is simply the March 23rd date. Now, if the people have been vetted before that and are in the county working, that's fine, finish your job. I don't have a problem with that. I'm saying that if they are building something and they lose workers because of this and where they live, how do we replace those workers? What kind of bedding goes on? Do they come in and are they under a period of time, you know, that they have to do that 14 days? Or, you know, see, I'm just kind of getting confused with all of this wording going around, and, you know, I'm just trying to get it to understood so the public can understand.
There's nothing in this document that would prohibit that, that construction company from gathering other workers from other parts of the state or the country to come in and work, so that, no, it would not do that, because you're still, you're still have the potential of bringing in people. We don't know what's going to be taking place.
Even if the, excuse me, just a second, even if the people came in and Allison's department said, "You're under a 14-day quarantine," limited or whatever, they can only be on the job site, they can't go really anywhere else because they're under that quarantine. And so, it doesn't matter then where, from where they come, well, it does, but, you know, it doesn't matter from where they come, they would be immediately placed under the quarantine. They could go to work, they could still work, but that quarantine, I think, is a very important part of this in protecting our citizens, if indeed that's what we're saying we're trying to do.
The only other thing we could add to this is to limit the, you know, for, if you wanted to put a two-week moratorium on building permits, we can, you can look at doing that, and that would slow down the progression through this event, so.
Okay, thank you. Allison, I do have a question for you. As we go into this and look at this, is there a possibility, is it even possible, to do such a quarantine on new workers coming in who have not been vetted up to this point? Who are coming in after March 23rd? A self-quarantine or an issued quarantine, is that even possible? I don't know.
I'm going to say no. One, keeping track of them and knowing who's coming into the county, that would be virtually impossible. Secondly, the guidance now on quarantine is, somebody that's even positive for COVID-19, their household is under quarantine, but they're only to self-monitor, so they can still go out and about in the community, they don't have to stay home, is what the new guidance is now. So, if our citizens who may have been exposed to COVID-19 can go out and about in the county and do what they need to do, I'm not sure I can make an out-of-towner, something more stringent towards them. I don't know that.
Right, okay.
But again, I don't know how, how we would do that.
It would appear to me that, that the employer who are bringing these people in would have to be in touch with you at the health department.
Yes, if they would.
To say that they're bringing in new employees, and to say that if they self-quarantine, and quarantine is such a scary word anyway.
It's self-monitor, they would self-monitor themselves.
Self-monitor.
For, for fevers or respiratory problems, such, anything like that.
Right. So, but it would appear to me that if the builder were concerned, that they could work with you and when they bring in new workers, if they don't bring in any new workers, there's no problem. But when they bring in new workers, and if these new workers had no illnesses but still needed to stay separate with their, with their crews, it, and I'm asking you because I don't know. I mean, you know, but it, it appears to me that something like that could be worked out, just for the new workers coming in who've not been here working as of March 23rd.
That's a possibility, and even then, I would actually refer it back to the building department, because they would know what's being built and who's coming in and what the contractors or who they're using, more so than I would. It would just be on faith-based for me if someone contacted me, but Kevin in his office would know.
But your resources and working with your resources, that's what I would hope you would do. You know, you've got, you've got to coordinate and build your team of trusted people, and if that's the building department, it's the building department. But to me, the issue is, is the overarching issue here is, is there any way that we could build that? You do it anyway, you do it anyway, but is there any way that we could build that just to ensure people or assure people that we're kind of on top of that?
I mean, we can request that contractors notify us of anybody that's coming to work from out of Ross County, Swain County area. We can do that as a voluntary basis, you can require it, so that just depends on what action you want to take.
Okay, but, but if we required it, my question boils down to, can you make it happen? We can, we can pass it, but can you make it happen once we do that? Working with the building, working with other people, and just make the request that they inform you if new workers come in.
We can make a database of that, of people, if the contractor will call us and notify us. Now, when it goes past that point that they do not notify us and you've required it, then that goes to the sheriff's department or the police department for citation, because my office would not be able to do that.
Right, I understand, I understand what your limitations are. Sheriff, what's your take on that?
Let me go back to the very first about the stay-home, stay-safe.
Okay.
I'm all for staying safe. If you, if y'all do issue a stay-home slash stay-safe, it's going to dissuade a lot of these people that have no symptoms, they're not ill, they're not going to be able to go to the drive, drive-through, they're not going to be able to go carry out, and these businesses that are struggling, that are. And these businesses that are struggling, they're, they're going to fail. I mean, they're, they're relying on, on those people to frequent their business and bring money in. My opinion, my opinion on that.
Sure.
I agree with the stay safe, and that's common sense.
Right.
And instead of making it a declaration, you might want to consider making it a suggestion, a recommendation without making it an order. That takes a lot of burden off us also when that happens. I mean, we're going to do our job, but, you know, pretty soon you're going to overload the wagon and probably be able to push it.
I agree with that.
One thing, so, one of the things is food, food, beverage and agriculture, so they will be able to still go to the drive-through, ju-just like they are now.
Right.
But pretty much.
Yeah.
This, all this order really does is define it more and, and exempts non-essential services, which we've talked about, the one that kind of jumps out to me is the real estate. But as far as everything else, it's pretty much exactly like what it is now. And it, it does encourage people to stay home, encourage people to do social distancing and be mindful of their surroundings. So this, this basically just puts in paper, I think, what, what your, what message you want to convey. You know, we think it's best for you to stay home, we think it's best for, if you do go out, you can go here, 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 and you're relatively, you know, as long as you have social distancing, should be, that's just our recommendation. So, so it is a recommendation, but it's more of a, you know, order at the same time where you have, and black and white, and people have a certain level of security knowing that the government is, is looking out for their best interests.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. It's time for, thanks Sheriff, thank you Allison, it's time for either further discussion or take a vote if there are no more.
I didn't make a motion, did I?
No, not on this.
Not on this.
We voted on the other.
That was the May 23rd, or, excuse me, March 23rd.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, I haven't seen in there anywhere, we're having a lot of folks concerned about county buildings, about allowing people in. Should that be a part of this, if you consider that?
Yeah, if you look at non-essential services for governmental part, of course, they're, they're pretty much widely defined. With this order, we will be closing the courthouse functions, which would be the tax office, Regisurdees and the DMV, License Plate Agency. We don't know at this point how long. Right now, I would suggest at least 14 days, starting Monday. This building, of course, will be closed. Essential services are going to be your sanitation, any public, you know, public safety official, of course, are going to be essential services. The folks that are in these buildings would be working in their office, disclose to the public. And we will have all of the policies or protocols for social distancing put in place. We might have to do staggered, you know, staggered staffing to, to help us through this protective order, so.
Would that, closing the tag office, Francis, would you still allow a number on the door and people, one person in to do business at a time or?
We, we can look at different protocols, whatever, whatever y'all, we've not really received any notification from the DMV. We are a contractor for the DMV, so we have to kind of go by some of their guidelines. And so we'll touch base with them to see if that would even be possible. It may just be, need to be closed for two weeks and then reopen, but we will check with them first, just to see. But if that, if that's a possibility, yes, most definitely.
And that was going to be my question as well. I have received, somebody said we got 10 calls, I wish I'd only gotten 10 calls. But, but the question was, if they are a senior citizen, have other vulnerabilities, and they don't want to come to town to renew their vehicle, what do they do? So I guess my question is, unless the state does it, we can't extend for them any time. So the state would have to hand down, hand that down to us and with the, as you're talking about the office, but, you know, all of the other stuff as well, so.
Yeah, as far as policy goes, we are just number 87 of the License Plate Agency or LPA, and we are a contractor, just like a lot of counties and, and private businesses throughout the state of North Carolina are. So we got to go by their policies and procedures. The only thing we can do in, in this course of state of emergency, we can probably close the office. But as far as, you know, going out to the public or doing stuff by phone, normally with that particular office, we have to have, you know, the title in hand, face-to-face. And unfortunately, that, that's just the way the, nature of that business.
Danny, anything else?
I've read through some of this, just skimming through it, and I think it really pretty much lays out a lot of stuff that we, that, it kind of puts words to thoughts. I mean, because we don't, I don't know what essential is, you say essential, people, it's kind of, so I think this is what this is doing. I think we need to look at it as an order and not just a suggestion, because I don't, I've got all kinds of suggestions, but I think orders are what we're here for. If we just suggest things, then, I don't know if that's really got any backbone or teeth to it at all. And there won't be a lot, I don't think, of people that'll be completely out of compliance with this. If they are, then what to deal with it when we, when we get there. I think that's just one of the things, we don't know exactly what some of this is going to look like, but that can keep us from trying to do what we knows right.
Since we don't have a motion and a second on the floor, I guess that's the next step. When, we have not seen this, so we cannot act on it today. So would it carry over to the next meeting when we decide to meet or next regular meeting?
You can, I know you've not seen it, and we can take time if you want to and go through each part of it. Since it is an emergency document, you can act on it today.
Well, it may be an emergency document, and we could act on it today, but I don't understand it and I don't want to act on anything, I don't think I can.
That's fine. You can call a meeting Monday, if that's what you prefer, and, and do it then, or one day next week, that's fine.
And I've, I've said that for myself, let me ask the rest of the commissioner, the other commissioners, how their feeling is on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start if you want me to on this side of the table. This is a supplemental declaration of local state emergency. It has to do with restricting movement of all individuals living within Swain County, the town of Bryan City, to stay at their place of residence except when someone goes on. And then it explains what those are. I don't necessarily have an issue with that whatsoever in us passing that today. And then I would think that we would actually then go ahead and meet again early next week as well, to continue to be updated and continue to see how everything that we are putting into place is working. Give us time to receive concerns from citizens, to turn it over to the Sheriff's Department and Health Department, county government. I, for one, myself, think this just explains what we're trying to do anyway. So myself, Mr. Chairman, I would be in favor of going ahead and voting on this at this meeting this morning.
And in addition, Mr. Commissioners, if I may say, we can come back if we run into problems and amend it anyway. So it's not really locked in or locks us in, we can come back and amend it should that need arise.
I, I think you're absolutely correct, we've already made an amendment from Monday's meeting to this one. And so if we, whatever day we choose next week, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, whatever the first part of the week, we'll have three or four days here, two or three days to have whatever day we choose to, to reassess what we've done. So I, I think it shows a, for me, I think it shows the citizens were working and trying to stay on top of this. I think by passing this supplemental declaration of restriction of movement would be prudent for us to do, that's my opinion. Also, as I'm speaking though, I'd also understand that it is a class two misdemeanor to violate these laws. And I talked to Sheriff Cochran and that goes on your record, you pay a fine. So we, we, we want people to take this seriously as well.
Well, and I think that that's a very good point, Commissioner, that you raised. We're not just sitting here because we don't have anything else to do today. We are concerned about the safety of the county and the people, and we do want them to take it seriously. And I think you're absolutely right.
I agree with Roger, I think we need to go ahead and get this thing in place, if we're going to get it in place, come back. I'd say we meet again Monday morning, 9:00 AM on that. And then I'd say we get it, meet again, at least by maybe Wednesday, maybe two or three times a week, because things changing every day. And we gotta, we gotta be ahead of this, ahead of this game on this thing. We can, this, I, I don't think there's anything you're going to come back and just really destroy this and do something different. It's, it's going to be a little amendment, it's like the one we done today on the, on the date for the 30-day rentals, that's, we didn't see that in our last time, so we put it in there. So I'm in agreements with, we, we vote on this thing, get it going. As an ordinance or a.
Amendment to the.
Well, I'm in agreement also, I would say that if we need time to sit here and go through this for an hour, or however much time we need to spend, everybody needs that. I agree with Roger, we need to go ahead and move on this.
Okay. Cam?
I don't mind voting on it, I just don't see that it explains everything as well as everybody says it does, because we've asked questions already about what the essential things are, what it's going to change that we haven't gotten place now. I don't believe we're going to be able to, I don't like restricting movement, I don't like the way that even sounds, I understand, but we all are taking this serious. I've got family members also that are in danger or at higher risk of this, but I, I do not see that this does anything different than what we've already done, pretty much. And I wish people would just be considerate of us when it comes to coming from towns or cities of other states here, they're, they're not being considerate to us. The only reason I could even vote for the other part, the closing the rentals, was because people weren't being considerate of us. We don't have the facilities to deal with their people. We do not need a flow of people here. And, but I do not see that this does anything really different. And I've read it and it's like, and any different than even what the governor said about essential businesses and stuff already.
Yeah, and I have to agree, I think we're doing this and, you know, if I may disagree with you Danny for just a second, I don't think sitting here reading it and going over it line by line really captures us going home, thinking about it until the next meeting. Because ideas and things formulate in your mind, and when you're trying to even defend or argue your point of view, it takes everything away and you're not concentrating on this anymore. Because then you wind up in a disagreement that is so unnecessary. So, okay, I think we've discussed, sure.
One other comment, just, so our emergency team at yesterday's meeting did not come up with this document. In fact, we, we were kind of at the consensus that what we were doing was working, and is working, it is working. What kind of brought this to light is what David talked about earlier, about the state emergency management ramping up their efforts to create regional hospitals because they see a possible surge in this event. And so that's really what prompted us to create this document. And it mostly is defining what non-essential services are, you're, you're correct, it's not really expanding much about it, but it's a template moving forward. When we do have to add things to it, the framework is there. It's already in place, it's already establishing what technically is already here. So that, that's why we're bringing it to you now.
Sure, no, this is a supplement, I understand that. Roger raised a point that I wanted to ask about the fines and that kind of thing. Does it need to be in the supplement since it's in the original document?
As far as the rental properties? No.
No. As far as if you don't stay at home and there's somebody that decides to report you, what you create, what you're causing, on the last page of this document, my question is, it does sound harsh, but to reiterate and to really, to reiterate what it, what it would cost the individual to violate it, we've already got that.
But it was only for the rental folks, not for the stay-in-place?
Gotcha.
That's all.
Okay, I think we've discussed this about as much as we can. And again, you know, seeking clarifications of people who are listening or we hope were being clear, we've gone through a lot of stuff and so, and back and forth, but if there are no more discussion issues with this, I will entertain a motion to adopt the supplement.
I make a motion that we adopt the supplemental declaration of local state emergency order.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the supplemental or addendum to the, sorry.
One other thing, I'm sorry. This will go in effect 8:00 PM tonight.
Okay, 8:00 PM tonight, guys. Hear that? And if we're going to put it into effect, it might as well go into effect today, I mean, otherwise, so, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the supplement or addendum to the original, whatever you call it, state of emergency. Do any, are there any other discussions? If not, then if you agree, I want to ask you to raise your right hand. And that's four. If you disagree, please raise your right hand. Okay, so it's four to one, this is passed. Okay, anything else on, on this or around this?
Can I ask Allison a question? Whoever this was, had been quarantined, had been positively tested, was, was there, is there other people that are quarantined with them? Or is that?
The family, I think.
Families, or is it, I, I was wondering how this quarantine works, I know if you quarantine one person, does anybody that has in contact with them also get quarantined?
It's not quarantine, it'd be self-monitoring. We, we would try to get a list of anybody that's been in contact with this person and notify them just to self-monitor and take note of that, basically. There is family with this person and they are not, to my knowledge, showing any signs or symptoms at this time.
Okay, I was just thinking on that.
One other comment, so our group also talked about, and I know y'all have had some discussions about closing borders and things like that. So just let you know for the public's benefit that we are looking at all aspects at this point. We've determined it would take 48 deputies to, to do man stops at each one of our, in the county. So we don't have, one, we don't have the, the four. Second, we did go out for an RFP for emergency signage and road closure, I guess, equipment. And so just to make sure we have it, I think it was going to be $30,000 for a two-week period to close the roads. So just FYI, we, we are, we, we do have the capability if this board chooses to do so as far as, not, not the manpower, but to do road closures at some point. And just want to let you know, we are looking at all aspects of this event and, and process and, but that's not a recommendation of our, our group.
I understand.
Just want to let you know.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like Mr. Chairman, I would also like for us to make sure, I think we did a, a good job last Monday of getting the supplement out that we passed at that time, to all the different sources for the people to be able to see. And I suggest we do the same thing, make sure that it gets out to every kind of, of outlet agencies, so that people can read this supplement and see what it is that we just passed, see what's, what's restricted and what is not restricted. And I think that's a very important thing, get that out there and put it on our government page, Smoke Mountain Times, all, all the, all access to it.
With that, since it's a longer document, we recommend posting on the actual website, and we can post a link to the website, because you have to scan it in on the Facebook, and it's too large for that, and it's hard to read.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it? Did you say what you wanted to say?
I think, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I just want to get it out there. I just want this to be available.
I would look at our clerk and say that that falls within her bailiwick, and she should be able to get this out where it needs to go. Okay? Okay. Any other questions?
If we are going to meet next week, the first of next week, I would ask that we meet at 10:00 or after lunch. This just gives us a little more time to meet as a group if anything has happened over the weekend, or that we can bring any recommendations to you.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate you saying that, because I feel the same way. It's one thing to let the public know that we're on top of all of this, or that we're involved in it. It's another thing to give you guys time to do, due diligence. So, so I agree with that, and, and we can, I, I think we can do that.
Will, will we get time for the team, for you guys?
Do you prefer one after lunch?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, please.
Okay, so we have not set a time yet, but just keep that in mind when we get around to setting a time for our next meeting. Okay. Anything else around this issue? If not, we do have some people who want to speak to us, and so, I understand, Chair, go ahead. Were you gonna get somebody?
I'm going to go first.
(laughing)
I'm going to do it. Hey. Thanks, sir. I think we're ready. Next item, public.
Amber and I need to go. Is there any other questions before we head out?
I thank you guys for staying on top of this.
Thank you very much.
I've called Allison a couple times. I appreciate the info. So you're doing a good job.
Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. My name's Cynthia Wommel. I'm a resident of Swain County. I sent to each of you an email, the commissioners this week, an email expressing my concerns about the county, and, and also thanking you for all that you've done so far. The declaration on Monday, you just passed a supplemental to that. I do share the same concern you have, Mr. Parton, on exactly what changes. I'm not sure there's a single business in Swain County that will close because of this declaration as being non-essential. It seems pretty broad, and that seems to be what's happening in the other counties. I do want to, like I said, thank you. It's amazing to see our community come together the way it has right now. I mean, neighbors helping neighbors, strangers helping each other at a time of crisis. We do have a lot of people in need in our community. We have a lot of people out of work. We also have a lot of resources with our food bank here in Bryson City, with Restoration House, with the Carrying Corner, with all our churches coming together. I am just astounded by what our school district has been able to do in a very short period of time to completely change their mode of operations in all ways, and still have services going to our folks. The health department, our first responders, I mean, it's just amazing to me. And like I said, I do, I do want to thank you, all of you, for what's happening there. And then I ask that we not forget those folks who are in those essential businesses, like our grocery workers, the folk, our pharmacists, and healthcare, all of those who are out there, some of in very low-paying jobs, working their butts off, literally, to make sure that we have food. It came to my attention earlier this week that one of our local citizens had started a petition to close the borders of Swain County to anyone. And I know you just addressed that here, and said the emergency management team had already looked at that, and what it would cost, and what it would take in terms of manpower. I, I know that that petition does have a lot of signatures on it right now from Swain County residents, but I wanted you to know that not all Swain County residents believe that's the right way to go. I can only speak for me. I don't have a petition, but I can tell you that I don't believe it's the right way to go. And I think that I would rather have our scarce resources that we have in our county, whether that's our law enforcement, whether it is anyone else who works for the county, spent on other positive things, than trying to keep out somebody who we don't even know who or what they are at a time when we are part of a larger community. We, Swain County, don't stand alone in western North Carolina. As several of you brought up during the meeting, we have people in Swain County who work in other counties. We have people in other counties who are essential personnel in our county. They are our schoolteachers. They work at Ingles. They are people who are our pharmacists. They're everything. They're healthcare. If one person crosses, it's a porous border. We also haven't talked about the people that would need to get through our county to get to other places, whether that is to Graham County, to Macon County, to Cherokee County, wherever it is they would need to go, and how those people would be taken care of. Are we really gonna stop everybody at the border of Swain County and check their temperature? Oh, wait, that doesn't work either, because you can be asymptomatic and already have COVID-19. So I just wanted to say, I don't agree with that, and that I think that we're stronger together with the other counties in western North Carolina, and that we shouldn't try to go this alone. We need to be a team with Jackson and Swain, with Jackson and Graham and Macon. And remember that we are all neighbors. We have families in those counties. We have friends in those counties. We have church family members in those counties. We have coworkers in those counties. They're not the enemy. We should let them come to our Ingles and shop. We shouldn't say, you can't. And they should allow me to go to Lowe's if I need something that, for some reason, Clampits doesn't have. They have almost everything. But if they do not have it, I ought to be able to go to Lowe's in Jackson County and get it. I don't want them to tell me I can't do that. And I don't want here for us to be saying, you are others, you're not important enough. We only care about people who actually have Swain County on their driver's license. I think that's the wrong message to send at a time when the nation is in crisis. We need to be caring. We need to be safe. We don't want people spreading, but we need to do it in a way that's compassionate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Um, so I've timed myself to my three minutes. So, good morning, the Swain County Commissioners.
Have you timed yourself? Would you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes. My name's Kelly Mar. I'm a 26-year-old citizen currently residing in Whittier, and I've been living here since the age of three. On the evening of Tuesday, March 24th, I drew up a petition to get Swain County borders closed. My opinion was formed after the closure of Quala Boundary, Graham County, and most recently Highlands, in deciding this was best for our local communities. With the most recent news of the U.S. having the highest amount of reported cases in the world, I believe the virus has already made and since been confirmed that it is in our town. At this moment, it does not matter how it got here. It matters how we're going to stop the spread or flatten the curve. I've had three popular opinions on why closing the border is a bad idea. People can't get to work or visit family. They cannot go to the grocery store, pharmacy, or doctor, and that we've already closed all parks and short-term rentals, which should alleviate the mass amounts of visitors that we do have. I was optimistic on Tuesday and Wednesday when both announcements were made. The grocery store traffic was much less than Monday, and I actually found some ground beef. My response to these challenges, number one, if your job is essential, you will be able to travel in and out of counties. This is what Graham, Cherokee, and Highlands are doing, and I cannot see why we would be any different. Two, if our borders were shut down, that does not mean no one can cross the line ever. It simply means that the entrances will be limited to the locals of Swain County. And similar to a routine traffic check, a driver's license, long-term rental agreement, or a job ID are just a few of the options that I imagine could get us through the border. And as previously mentioned with your addendum to the declaration, that covered my third point on that part, with the 30-day as a Monday. So turning to, turning away visitors is the last thing that I want to do right now, but at this moment, I feel it's in our best interest to do so. And if also surrounding counties are on lockdown, our citizens cannot get in, but their citizens can come into our county and use our resources and possibly expose us even more. I know that our staff is limited, as well as our resources, and with there being many entrances in and out of Swain County, have attempted to come up with the simplest solution. We would need a total of five closed roads, three-manned blockades located at Exit 67, which is the main exit, Margie Hyatt's garage catching all traffic coming off Exit 64, as well as those traveling backroads like Lower Alarca Road and Buckner Branch, and Highway 19 at the pull-off just past Darnell Farms and Walker Woody Road, catching traffic from Ela and Hyatt Creek exit. And then the two unmanned blockades located at the east side of Old River Road, allowing residents to access the west side, and on Tom Branch Road of Galbert Creek, which limits accessibility through Deep Creek. I truly believe the sooner we take action, and the sooner we get back to our normal lives and routines. I've printed out a copy of what I've said today, as well as a copy of the petition to give to you, and I ask that you please consider this and all information in the upcoming decisions that need to be made. I would like to thank you for your time, as well as everything that you have done for our community, as far as the outbreak of the coronavirus. I know myself, as well as others, really appreciate your time and effort to help our community. And I have these. I just made a couple copies.
Give, give them to the clerk, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Messrs., you've heard, do we need any comments? I appreciate them saying how much they appreciate, you know, we're all in this bubble together. And, you know, we're learning as we go, as well as they are and everyone else. And so I guess, when I ask questions, I want people to understand that I'm trying to get clarification. If I understand it, I'm sure the public would understand it. So that's part of what it is. Gentlemen, do you have anything else to add? Chair, David, do you have?
In an effort to assist the sheriff and all of us, I guess, in, in my thought process, the order we put in Monday and the order we put in today are an effort to restrict the movement. And that's what's happening. It doesn't sound bad. Mr. Parton, I agree with you. Are we gonna be 100% successful? We are not. Now, if we can stop 75% of it, I would say that's highly successful. So as the citizens of the county are thinking about the orders that we have in place, and starting to make phone calls, you know, understand that we're getting the most of the traffic stopped. We have so far. We've heard the sheriff say, they're doing surveys and looking. There's not as many out-of-state cars here, which was our goal. So the citizens of the county, if we can ask them to have a little bit of patience, as we're going through, and they start, they see somebody that thinks shouldn't be here, they're gonna call and say, well, somebody check, you know, if it's a concern, absolutely, right, Sheriff? But at the same time, if they would give us some time to make this work, and with the understanding that we are not gonna be 100% successful.
Well, thank you. Chair, did you want to add to that?
We are definitely in uncharted waters. This is kind of learn-as-you-go situation. Hopefully, if we ever have to face this again, we'll have things in place that, that will eliminate a lot of this, these meetings, and trying to, to get plans and procedures in place. But I, I appreciate you all, too. I mean, you, you've worked hard, tried to do what you think's right for Swain County. And we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to try to fulfill those orders that you put out. And I, I think we're gonna be a better county when this is over with. I think we're gonna come together. We're gonna grow, and, and just be better for it.
Well, let me thank you, and I also want to thank David, but let me thank you and your crew, your staff, and deputies, because we could pass anything we want to pass. But if we don't have anybody to go out and enforce it, then it doesn't do us any good. So we're counting on you, and depending on you, and, and waiting on you to come back with good advice. I thought that was an excellent recommendation this morning, and we thank you very much. David, that takes nothing away from your crew, or your staff, because we know that emergency responders, emergency personnel are, they literally are on, not the front line, but they're on the line. And they have, we need to try to ensure that they have all of the equipment that they need in order to respond to the citizens of Swain County. So we thank you, and Allison, and any, anyone else, our manager, who is involved in this and helping us and guiding us. I think the emergency team is in place, so we don't make any knee-jerk reactions or emotional actions, that we do what is better for the county. And, you know, your recommendations give us time to sit and think about what's going on. So I thank you. Danny, you have anything to say?
I, I've just got one question. I've been sitting here and come up with lots of questions, I think. I just had, I just had a text from someone. And again, we're gonna get, I think, barraged with the calls about essential services. Is there someplace we should refer them to call to have that help be defined? For instance, I have a text from someone that mows lawns. Are they considered an essential service? How are we going to define all this? We gotta take it one at a time, or how are we gonna do that? These people are, this person is serious and wanting to know. It's a livelihood issue for them also. But, again...
To answer your question, I, I, we'll have to go back and look at the essential part. I know other counties have kind of toyed with that, the lawn mowing, landscaping businesses. In my mind, they are essential services, because you, you know, that would go...
It's a health hazard to have teams overgrown.
Yeah, exactly. It would be a health-related part. If, if it didn't get done, then you could have possibility of rodents, thing like that. So, so in my mind, it would be essential.
Yeah.
I think Kim left that out. So, so basically, it is an essential service, from our ordinance standpoint. There are other counties that, that thought it was not an essential service, and therefore they, they put a stop to it, because there would be more than three or four people in a truck going to a site. And that was their logic. But I think we left it out. I think, I think it's part of our essential services.
But in going forward, we're gonna get, I think, barrage a lot of calls, and then a lot of complaints about, will you allow that one to work in this? Is there an opportunity to set up a committee or something?
We have one, Danny. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
We have one. The Health Department hotline, 488-3198. They can call and get those kind of questions. If the person on the phone cannot answer that question, they would either go to Kevin, or, or even David, or Allison herself. So, so, yes, the 488-3198. Also, I think that if we feel that the words, Len, what, what'd you call it? The people that mow the lawns and take...
Or essential service, or for the health.
Landscaping, thank you. We need to get that, if we, if, if it's important, then we need to come back and amend our thing and include them in there. Doesn't mean that we can do that for everyone, but I think that, I agree that it is an essential thing, because a grown lawn attracts snakes.
Well, I think we can make it arbitrary to where people can plead their case, and we've got to look at it on an individual basis.
Right. Okay. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna enforce an order, we, we can't have knee-jerk reactions. So I need a very specific list of those people that, that are considered essential. I know some of them are, are listed here. I know some of them are listed here. But I don't want, I don't want my officers going out and having to make a decision on site saying, oh, I'm sorry, you can work, or sorry, you can't work. So I need that list, and that's what we're going to go by.
Well, thank you very much, Sheriff, and I agree with you as well, that it's our order, it's our, we put it in place, and so if that will help you better do your job, that's what we'll do. So, and I see the manager nodding his head, so I think he agrees, and he will come back to us at our next meeting with some recommendations. And thank you for that.
And we'll get your list.
I do have something, though. I know on our other emails and stuff where the state, which I know that some of this stuff is still held up, and federal stuff is held up, which will also come down to the state, like the unemployment being expanded and stuff like that. Are we putting out the same way that we're going to put this out, the avenues for people to go to get help with that? Because the state and federal is going to cover a lot of this stuff.
Yes.
Also...
And I agree with you, and probably every commissioner here has gotten, but you, because your email is down right now.
I got them up.
Okay, good. But everybody here has gotten bombarded from me with all of this kind of information.
Information.
Yes. And how to go and how to contact people, so, and if I'm mistaken, guys, tell me, but I think that sometimes I feel guilty about sending you all of the stuff.
Well, it's fine to send, but do we have it like at the resource center? Do we have all the information you send us? I looked at all of them, told my wife, yeah, most of these are from Ben. But it's all information like that, and we had some other stuff from the state. Do we have that set up, like at the resource center, where people can...
Can access it.
Or where they sign up for unemployment and stuff? Through DSA or Social Services, is that where they file for unemployment?
No, that's through Employment Security Commission, they're doing, they're actually closed their offices here, so...
They've closed here?
Yeah.
So how do we help the people here who need to file for the unemployment?
They have, there's a state number that they call.
We need to get that out.
And I'm agreeing with Kenneth at this point, Kevin. Is the Family Resource Center operating?
It is operating, but I think we need to point them back to the 488-3198 number, and also the 211, and also if they have questions about the COVID-19, to the COVID NC, where they can get the text messaging. I think those are the three outlets right now. For the 211, this resource center is going to be on there for the food service. So they're already on there for that. Also, in 211, it's going to point them toward the state resources as far as unemployment insurance, anything that they need for unemployment or state services. So I think we need to point them in those directions first. And we'll be a filter, I mean, they can call the main number, our main number at the courthouse, and we can, we'll be able to filter them.
And that number is what?
488-9273.
Okay, and then extensions for anyone they needed? How do they get that? I've listened to that, and I find it extremely irritating, but, you know, that's my personal...
Yeah, we'll try to get a press one. So it'll be in the first string, on the telephone string, or tree, I think is where it would go.
I think if you press zero, now it automatically comes to me anyway.
Yeah, so we'll handle that in here.
Okay, okay, that's taking care of enhanced. Anything else that you have?
Just, no, that's it. And, well, the volunteer list stuff, you tried to get started before, that we were in the process of making, you know, it's been a while since we talked about it. Do you have any of that? If, I'd like to see some of our communities, if there's anybody on that list that's in...
I think that we go back to the county manager and just simply say, because that was going with the Family Resource Center, so they do need to be open, and they knew, that people do need to be able to know that number. So if that would happen. Anything else?
I have, oh, sorry. I just want, we had two people come in here talking about closing the county down. One was kind of Fort, one was kind of Ginn. I don't know exactly what all that looks like. I know Graham County is looking at shutting theirs down. They don't know if that's going to happen or not, I think there's some hiccups in that. But...
I was just trying to get, I thought, because they were...
Right, right. And so, but I was listening to talk about shutting the county down. It sounded like one was trying to talk about shutting the town down. So that's what I wanted to clarify, and that if we were to shut down, it would be the county and not just the town, right? Is that what I'm, I mean, if that was, that would be the object of it? Is that what we're looking at? I mean, that's what I wanted to know.
Any action by this board would be the entire county. The town board has the authority under that jurisdiction to shut the borders of the town down as well, should they choose to.
Okay, yeah, that's just kind of what I was wondering, I knew that was a little bit confusing.
If you all did issue an order to shut the county down, that includes the city office.
The municipality would be included in that also, so...
And that's only, but let me be clear, that's only because they signed our state of emergency, and they gave us the authority to do that within the borders of the city. But otherwise, they would not have, we would not have that authority without their approval.
I know Mayor Tom's not in here, but I've been talking to him probably about every day, too, trying to keep...
I think he's in one of the rooms around.
He's here somewhere.
But I think that that's clear, that we have that authority as long as the mayor signs that piece of paper. So, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe, if y'all did an order to shut down the county, I don't believe we need 274, because it's a by-pass, through the fire for other counties.
So that equals the Excess.
Exactly. That's where the 48, land power, that's where it came from.
Okay.
We have 48, it's just a city.
As you told us last time, Sheriff, that's a 24-hour job. That's not just a, you know, go up there and sit there for a couple hours and go home.
That's 48 people, 12 hours, so you're looking at 96 people, 24 hours here.
Right, right, okay. Thank you. Well, we hope that people can get record, get a copy of this meeting, so that they know that we are trying to stay on top of everything, and that we have a lot more information and input. And I am aware, David, that, and I'm going to ask you rather than the sheriff on this, do you know where today Graham County is shutting its borders?
The information I have is from Facebook, just basically my Gmail, so, and I don't have it. Someone had to show it to me. My understanding is that the M.D. told them they could not close the bypass around I had, which is the same thing, that's not closing the city. So, my understanding is they're closing the, Sheriff, have a highway, and they're attempting to close the Excess into Tennessee, or an alley, which, you know, for them to do that, it would be a, Sheriff, I think, a day under that block.
Okay. Can you update us on anything?
Sheriff, I've not heard Sheriff's warning since I've talked to him.
Okay. Go ahead, Sheriff.
I've talked to Sheriff Jones several times this week about road closures. As David said, Shore, Skyway, Topeka Dam, and Fontana, down in that area, inside Graham County. I thought, told him, I said, you know, if y'all want to set up inside Graham County, we support you 100%. But as right now, we're not closing roads in Swain County. So, and that's what they want to do, go to Deal Gap and close the roads right there, which is squarely in Swain County. So I think we may have that nipped in the bud for the point. If they want to close in Graham County, I'm all for it.
Can I ask Curtis a question? Curtis, do you see a necessity for a curfew, as other counties have done?
I really don't, right now. The traffic volume is really down. Our call volume is really down at this time. If we were having massive breaking and entries, or carjackings, or assaults, then I would probably see it differently, but at this time, I don't recommend that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Good question. I had one request of a clerk.
Sure.
I looked on the county's website, government website, my old phone number, I haven't had for several years, is still on there. Would you update that to 828-736-3702?
I think it'd be a good, Madam Clerk, if you would just take a look at the whole page and see what needs to be updated.
I've got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
On the website, is, I don't, I've not looked at it in there, too, but it may be already on there, like the COVID-19, the 488-3198 for the Health Department. Is there like a section where people can go on there, if they're, like the 211 number, and...
See Clerk nodding her head.
It's on there? Okay.
Yes, they're trying to get all those things on there. There is one section already about the COVID that you can just click on, and it'll give those resources, as well as the YouTube channel that you guys have started to get those things.
Okay, all right, I just will.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, kind of in a closing type of statement, I think when you come, go through a crisis like we're going through right now, it brings out the character of the county, and I want us to be, when this is over, look back and say that this county handled this with class and character. I would like to state, you know, some of the simple, most obvious things, seems like it shouldn't even need to be said, but you know, if you're sick, just stay home. If you're around somebody that's been sick, just stay home. If you are afraid of becoming sick and have compromised system, stay home. And I'd like to add with that, then also, please check on your neighbor, please check on your family. Take care of each other, and we will get through this, and we will look back, and we'll have a sense of pride of how we handled this as a community and as a county.
Thank you very much. Well said.
Set our next meeting.
One of the things, Roger, that, if there is humor in this, I think it was the toilet paper hoarding, and the CDC has said the best thing you can do is wash your hands with soap and water. There's not been a run on soap. The second best thing that you can do is have some hand sanitizer. There's not been a run on hand sanitizer. Although, a couple of things have happened that I think is important.
And that's that the national health people are really taking this, in my estimation, very seriously, and trying to get out as much information as they can. And sometimes they hit the road box, they overlook the government, including ours, and we just need to keep putting out information for people. And if you go to these phone numbers, you should be able to find whatever you want to see.
I'm a bad guy.
Okay.
You know, there's all, like you say, a little humor in everything, but there's less than this often.
Yes.
If this happened here before, could you lie? Could you imagine, yes, could we be in on that?
Well, Curtis, one of the things that I keep thinking about is that, how many of us in our churches and individually have prayed that we find a way to pull our families back together? We've got it. I used to complain seriously about the cell phone and how it's taken over our lives, but in self-isolation, I'm not cut off from the world. I've got my cell phone, and I think that's a blessing in itself. So I've had to stop and rethink everything that I thought was important and not important. Okay, let's set our next meeting. When do you guys want to come in? And David, I will ask you, how much time do you think, and Sheriff, how much time do you think we need for you to get a grip on what's going on as far as our challenge and getting the people out? You know, we've got a lot of people out there who do call me and tell me that they've spotted out-of-state cars, and, you know, but we need to be more judicious as commissioners in how we respond to that and how we get it going. David?
I think it's going to take a few days to see how successful we are. Monday morning would definitely be too early for us to gather information and get back with you. But early next week, we're probably going to need to talk about identifying some of the things that are essentially not, because we're going to have a number of questions by then, so, you know, I think it's probably not that idea to meet on Monday. Maybe after that, maybe just once a week or something at that point, so...
Okay. Do you think Wednesday or Friday? I mean, like we keep saying, this thing keeps changing daily.
Yes.
But we're counting on your team to keep us updated as to what's going on. So from your recommendation, would you say Friday? Would you say Wednesday? I mean, I realize Monday is too soon. I mean, it is, for a lot of stuff.
Without that defined list in our hand, I don't know really how to answer that, other than, it's going to take a little bit of time. We're going to have to reorganize our whole shift pattern now and do some things, and it just, I would think probably Friday will give us a little bit of an idea, anyway.
Sure, okay. Well, what we will do, Sheriff, as far as some of this list, we can talk to the county manager over the phone and other ways to communicate, and get some ideas together from us, as well as from him, as to what may be entailed in that list, and just keep you fed that information, so you have a general idea of what's going on, until we meet and formalize it, so...
And the committee can meet any time, you know, and if we see something that's progressing or not progressing, then, which Kevin would know that, he can feed that all to y'all, too.
Right, exactly. I mean, we've got to do the communication thing, what do they call it, electronic communications? We've got to, we've just got to pick up on that and do that, yes.
But when they do, when the committee does, two of us can go to that.
Yes, exactly.
Without having to call public meeting. Then if anybody felt comfortable in going to their, I mean, I think that's...
Emergency team meeting you're talking about?
Yeah, two could go this time, two can go, and if we need to call more meetings to get information to us, and you need to meet at any time, a couple of us should probably go, shouldn't we? Or should we?
That is, that's personal call, but one of the things that I will ask you to do is coordinate that with Cindy. Cindy doesn't have enough to do now, so we've got to give her some more to do. But coordinate that with Cindy, so we don't, we are not in violation of the same-time laws ourselves, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I was under the impression that we were going to meet at 1:00 Monday, that this would give us the weekend to see how this supplement that we just passed went, see what clarifications we need on this supplement to be able to give to the Sheriff's Department and others. So I was under that impression that we had agreed, or we're going to meet at 1:00 Monday. Is that...
We're going to make a motion in just a minute as to when that will be, Roger. And I think them coming to us with new information or recommendations does not supersede our ability to meet any time we want to.
I just was under the impression, it seemed like the, it suddenly was, I was thinking we were leaning toward Monday, and then I was hearing that we started leaning toward Friday, and I was confused, because I thought we had been leaning toward Monday.
Good clarification, because I think one of the commissioners gave the Monday date, and, you know, last time we acted on that without even going any farther than that. And this is what I want now, with the recommendation from our team to this board, for this board to make a determination of when they want to meet, not an individual.
And the recommendation that I had about meeting on Friday was just so we could gather more information about the order. I mean, y'all, y'all may be time you want to.
Yeah, I'd recommend we meet on Monday, as commissioners, even if they don't have this all together, that's fine, because we may have to...
Make it in the form of a motion, would you please?
I'll make a motion, we meet Monday at 1:00.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We've got a motion on the floor for a meeting at Monday morning at 9:00?
1:00.
At 1:00, okay. Oh, thank you. A meeting on Monday at 1:00. A meeting on Monday at 1:00, and if, if the emergency team is not ready to come to us, they don't have to show up for that meeting, we'll have some other stuff to discuss. Okay? Just so, just so you guys understand, and that's my understanding of this motion. Am I correct?
Yeah, if they don't have, they, they need to probably show up anyway, because they, we might have some information they need.
Right, that's up to them, right. I just call, I just...
I don't think we'd have your recommendations to change anything on Monday, but we might even bring you questions about clarifications.
Okay, good, good. I have a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second the motion, we meet Monday at 1:00.
Okay, Monday at 1:00, a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, and that is passed unanimously. Any other items of importance, of extreme importance? Are we ready to close this meeting? Then I will entertain a motion to end this meeting at this time.
Motion is adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor to adjourn? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.